We're going to get the meeting started. This is a regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, November 12th, 2025. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us for silent prayer. Amen. Let's do introductions from the dais. Christy Rishel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer Odomas, Commissioner.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Anne Schoolly, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse. Welcome to everybody in the room. I'm going to make a motion that we approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odomas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We've got two presentations today. The first is from juvenile court. We have, we have moved into the budget cycle here at the county. We had the Administrator make his recommendations to us last week, and so now we are hearing from all the elected officials of departments about the requests from those departments as we debate as to how we're going to present a final budget for Hamilton County. And so we've got our first presentation today. Judge Bloom is here with her team, and if you wouldn't mind introducing your team as you come forward. So this is the 2026 budget presentation from JV Court.
That's right. You say JV Court. I say juvenile court. JV Court always makes us think, wait, is there a varsity court? But we know what you're saying. We are the varsity. I've brought the varsity team with us today. We have Kelly Leon. She is our Director of Communications, IGO Court Administrator, and we have Brian Wolf, who is our Finance Director. They're with us, with me today for support. They, all of their work, of course, is reflected in the presentation that I will give you today. I'm happy to answer any questions, as well as happy to supplement our conversation today. I know that our team, myself included, stays in pretty close contact with the staff here, with the Administrator, as well as each of your staff, because we want to make sure we're always on the same page. We don't want to wait until this annual check-in to find out that we have strayed, or we have not made ourselves clear in our intention and our ambition. So we certainly do appreciate everyone's willingness to work together. How do I make my own? Wow, it's like magic. Heck, this is a magic wand. Okay. As you said, this is our 2026 budget presentation. We, the presentation you'll see today is, I don't want to say lighthearted, but light in density, because our budget request is so heavy and dense, and the conversations around those reflect the same. And so we really want to present to you what we've been doing, what we've used, how we're stewarding taxpayer dollars, and what the results have been. So the court's priorities are community safety, rehabilitation of children and families, and reducing recidivism. And honestly, those all go together and could be summed up into one goal, but we dissect them out for lots of different reasons, because it helps us explain what we're doing, explain what our staff does. So the strategy to reach those goals are to follow the data. We know that data isn't always easy to get, especially with the tech that the court currently has. I believe the prosecutor's office has the same technology. Most, if not all, of the court systems and court parallel systems use the same case management system. It's a generic name, but that's what we call it. And then we have juvenile case management system. And I will tell you that there are a lot of efforts across the county to improve or replace for an improvement, that system, which, from my perspective as a judge now and a former practitioner, will extremely enhance the provision of services here in our county, and which will bring justice more fairly and quicker. The workarounds that we all have to do because of the case management system, which isn't anybody's fault, it's just aged, we're used to doing now, but there's some great ideas out there. So stay tuned. I just wanted to drop that line. We have national and statewide best practices that we follow. We have, I think the last time we were here, we highlighted with you the Systems Partners Group that we started, and that the Fisher Center through Children's is still moderating. They're teaching us how to moderate our own meetings. And by us, I mean the partners, including the court and some of our other agencies that partner with us, so that we can continue to work together after they go on to start a new project. And then really changing the way we look at kids and families who come in front of the court is another priority that we have. And a lot of that comes into training our staff, which you're going to see here. Probation Transformation is, hello, Commissioner? Probation Transformation is a nationwide model that the court is, I guess, transitioning to, but we're near the end, or past the halfway mark of transitioning to. And what it is, is a training model where the probation officer, is still called a probation officer, but instead of, we'd say, carrying a gun, which ours don't anyways, because they're juvenile probation officers, but, or any sort of weapon and wearing a big vest, they're there more as a coach for kids and families. And in fact, there is a family-engaged case planning, I guess, part of probation transformation, where we acknowledge that we can do everything under the sun for the one kid that comes into our jurisdiction and comes into the court for some reason. But when we send him or her home, they're going back into the same environment that they came to us from, which might be okay. It also might not be okay. And so we're spinning our wheels if we don't address the whole picture, the whole family, and as much of the community as we can. That is what the probation transformation rubric is about. Luckily, the NEE KC Foundation and Catalyze Justice, which is the CJ there, provide the training, provide the travel, provide the, they provide a lot of the funding for us to be able to send our staff, our leadership, and other ancillary staff in our court who need to be involved in this transformation to their training. So some folks just went last week, I think, to Baltimore, and they're learning as sort of like a cohort of a nationwide transformation on how we talk to kids. I'll tell you, as a former practitioner in juvenile justice, we've done these iterations of improvements before. When data and science tells us, so the science community tells us, hey, you guys are not approaching kids and families correctly, we result into something this way, of an agenda of how to change what we're doing to improve outcomes. And so this isn't a new idea to update what you're doing or change the way you approach families, and it has had great results before. So now we're on to probation transformation, where we start to talk about the actual people who interact with kids and families, and how are we going to make that better? So I could talk about that for hours and hours. But one of the ways that we are changing how we talk to, think about, and involve kids and families in the court are those kids who are in the detention center. Some of them cannot be released based on lots of different factors, but while they are with us, they are in what we call care and control of the court. That means that, in essence, we make the rules of where they live. So we want to make really fair rules, so that while they're with us, we have a really safe detention center for our staff and for the other kids, but also so when kids are released back into the community, or wherever they may be going next, they have an understanding of the way that rules and systems work in the world, and they have an understanding of where their place is in those rules. So PBIS, it's called, or Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, is also something, a program that's been in existence. It's in public schools. It's in lots of different areas of the community and of society already. Bringing it into the detention center has been, one, remarkably interesting, but also wildly successful. What it does is it talks to kids as if they're starting on ground level with us. So when kids come in, we don't, we don't tell other kids who are there what their charges are, or where they're from, or other things that are private to that kid. They're allowed to make their own community there. And what PBIS does is allows them all to start on one base level. Their, their own behaviors while they're there earn them extra dollar, extra bucks, their bonus bucks. They can earn getting to see their family more. They can earn different opportunities inside the detention center. So you can never earn your way out, but you can earn things in your controlled environment to improve your daily life, teaching them that when you are released, your behavior matters, and your behavior directly affects you. And so we're really, really thankful for PBIS and our staff who bought into it. It took a lot of training, and a lot of asking, and a lot of over-asking them to buy in, and now it's really, really great. Here's just a few pictures of the inside of the detention center. I know it's sort of hard to get in there as an adult. And so you'll see just ribbon-cutting pictures. The egg pot in the bottom left is in our sensory room, where that's an intervention specialist who's retired law enforcement, who works with us. Inside the egg is any kind of music that the intervention specialist chooses. They're in charge of it, and he plays, I think he said Motown most of the time, and the kids now are requesting Motown. And so I think that it's just really telling when they get around trusted adults, and those adults offer them things, they're willing to try it. We had a really great partnership with the Cincinnati Zoo, where they donated this garden. They came, they helped the kids learn how to grow vegetables and flowers. There's a group of kids who maintain the garden. They picked the produce. They learned about what the produce is, how it grows, how to use it. There was some discussion amongst the kids about how, how dare the squirrels take the good tomatoes, which they did, almost all of them. But it was a really genuine conversation about the way nature works and the way the world works, and it really has brought about some tear-jerkers, some tear-jerker conversations from kids, which I'll be sure to follow up with you and share some of their conversations. We have a great poem that went out, oh, I think we included it, we sent it to you, but about how I could have never had this opportunity on the outside, and thank you so much. And it's really remarkable. Again, the Cincinnati Zoo came in and gave their volunteer hours and gave the plants. These are other opportunities for experiences inside the youth center. We have, of course, you know, graduations. Kids are graduating from Cincinnati Public. Primarily, we do have a couple of kids who come in from other jurisdictions or other school districts. They have an awesome music teacher. They have had the opportunity to meet with different community folks. The girls got to participate in Girls on the Run while they were inside. We had a Girls on the Run team. We have an opera singer from the local opera group that comes in, some kids, or some people teaching them how to do chess, and then people with lived experience who come in and do panels with the kids, and they can ask them questions and, and otherwise. While it's obvious I could go on and on about the success at the detention center, it really only exists to serve a service to our community as part of the juvenile justice system. So while that will likely always go on, what we take a lot of pride in is that we are running what's been called a top-tier facility, a top-tier in the state of Ohio facility, and that the measure on staff engagement is just off the charts. I bring that to you because that hasn't always been true. And it hasn't always been true that our kids are charged with the level of offenses they are charged with now, and it hasn't always been true that our population is what it is now. But what I can tell you is that our staff is responding with the resources we are able to give them, and the detention center is monitored, just like any jail or any other detention center, by statewide and national licensing agencies, and we continue to receive off-the-charts marks. And all of the thanks goes to our staff who work really hard there. The other part of our court, then, of course, deals with dependency, custody, and child support jurisdictions. I think the best ride that we have made in the last two years is partnering with the Clerk of Courts, Pavin Pareek, and UC, and then, of course, with assistance from the board, to open the Help Center, the Custody Help Center, that's now also going to have a Domestic Relations Help Center, full-time attorneys for people who are not entitled attorneys through the Constitution. And so if you don't have money to pay for someone to help you get your kid, then you have to do it yourself. And that didn't seem fair. And so Pavin was gracious enough to partner with us and help us become an extension of the already existing Help Center, which is in the main courthouse. Now we have an office, and they're getting ready to open the Domestic Relations Office in our building as well. What that does is it really helps with our case flow, and it helps with people understanding what's happening. So much of what goes on in our building is said in legalese, no matter how hard we try not to. It's said in legalese, and when it comes to your kids, it is hard to understand, and it's hard to understand why a lot of times. And so Hope Finney, the attorney that we have right now, our clerks, and Nick Zangarelli is there in the picture as well, can help explain to parents the why, even though we are not representing every parent. We are helping them understand why and what their next steps can be. It really helps us, so our magistrates can do less of that explaining and more case hearing and more of the necessary legal work that can sometimes clog up the docket. We have our drug treatment court is recertified through the Supreme Court of Ohio. It had been expired for a few years, but with the help of the team there that you can see in the bottom right with a couple of graduates, it's recertified now. We are with the partnership, and thanks to JFS, able to now ask if we can expand that court and that docket, because we are getting pretty full. So it's parents who are experiencing, experiencing the loss of their children because of or related to drug use or drug abuse. And we can mediate, I guess it is the easiest way to say, their JFS case while they are going through drug treatment. And so they can continue to work with their children, continue to keep tabs on their children. They don't lose their children right away, which is the benefit of them, of the court being in our building, is because it's connected to that JFS case. We definitely appreciate the collaboration and advice that we get from the Adult Recovery and Treatment Court. Of course, we work pretty closely with the same providers that they do, and we do not duplicate anything so that we can make sure we're all using our resources as efficiently as possible. We're getting ready to start what's called the Dual Status Docket. There's a list there of the people who will be involved. What dual status is, is when a child is in, has an open JFS case with the court, and then they are also arrested for a criminal allegation. And so that would mean you're in our court for two reasons, dual status. This is an important thing to do, even though it will be infinitely complicated and sad. What we need to find out is why. Why are kids dual status? How do we make less of this? How do we make sure that we're partnering with our community partners as well as we can to make sure that kids are safe and healthy, and that they are not falling victim to being in the dependency court and then for further spiraling down? It's prompted by some of the bigger cases that we have had in the last couple of years, where kids had been in and out of agency care, and we want to make sure that we are doing what we can do on the court side and partnering with the agency to reduce those, essentially to reduce incarceration, but also victimization because of things kids experience when they're little. Of course, you know, we have the Assessment Center and Diversion, which is just off the charts, successful. The way that a case, I wanted to explain to you, the way a case gets to the Assessment Center is that when there's a filing, it can either be heard unofficially, which is based on statutory and rule eligibility, or the kid and family can be referred to the Assessment Center by the magistrate or the judge. That referral essentially sets up what's pre-trial services in adult court, or almost like day reporting can do, where we check in with you, we make sure we talk to you, talk to your parent, what's going on in your lives, what obstacles are happening. And I can tell you that the 83.5% of success rate, meaning no new charges in a year, is because of that consistent support and follow-through, and is because of the county resources that we are able to share with folks that already exist. They're not ours. We're just sharing with them what, what exists, connecting them, helping them follow through with referrals, helping them make sure the phone numbers are correct. And those are, those are some of our most meaningful cases where we can make sure that we don't where we can make sure that we don't ever see this family again, unless they'd like to come and see us. That's what we always say. But we like to keep them outside our doors as much as possible. You guys might have heard of Hillcrest. It's a project that we are going to work on for the betterment of our community. This year, the court applied to DYS for CCF funding at the direction of the governor. There was the report that came out after DYS was sort of audited by some professionals and it encouraged the big six, of which we are one, to apply for funding for a local community corrections facility. That money went to Cuyahoga, which is fine. They have a lot of needs too. And they don't have a property like Hillcrest. They don't have what we have and they don't have the potential to build something that is not state-involved like we do. We might still end up doing that. We might apply again. But I just, my heart goes to them. They are a lot more urban than we are and they have less opportunity for new builds. And they have a lot more cases than we do. So we as a court are committed though to utilizing the Hillcrest property and everything that can happen there. We've presented, of course, before to the board about our plans. We're still committed to all of those plans and committed to the encouragement, improvement and help that we can provide to all of our systems partners, including JFS, including Children's Hospital, including parents and guardians who need some respite. Those are all people that we consider in our orbit, in our community and folks that we should be serving. So we continue to work with partners and interested parties as they bring us opportunities to, to open all of or parts of Hillcrest. We of course will continue to update the board on all of the progress that we make there. Let's see. The numbers are here for your review. So we submitted our budget request, which of course included a, some increase. And then we went back and went through to make sure that we were being diligent with the county's money. What we were able to do then is reduce the number of new positions that we were seeking. Those new positions are primarily for the detention center or direct care positions, we would call them, working with kids as the influx of, as the population grows that we work with. Not just through delinquency, that population isn't growing as, as much and maybe not at all, but definitely through JFS-related cases or agency care cases. Those kids and those families, that population is really booming. And they are experiencing the community similarly to how we are, only they're already involved in care somehow and, and a lot of their resources are, are bottoming at this time. So we really want to make sure that we're reflective and capable of those needs. We're able then to balance out our ask with some changes in how we will operate the court. So the operational deficit that you can see there, not deficit reduction, that you can see is because Brian was able to look through and say, if we're prioritizing these positions, where can we put some other things together to sort of save money? So it's not that we've been overspending or not diligent with our spending, but it really were, those are conscious decisions to make to prioritize the positions and still provide the level of care that we are right now. And then the capital request is for a, a transport van. We do a lot of transportation. We do a lot of, and it's all for kids. And so we are really insistent on having safe equipment for them. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that. By answer questions, I mean I could bring up Brian if you'd like. And I'm also happy to answer any other questions. The highlights are here. These were in though our original request. These are not the mitigated requests. And so we originally asked for the money to scan and shred the boxes and boxes and rooms and rooms and basement full of records that have been kept because the law told us we had to keep them. Well, now the law's changed and no one was really keeping up with that old law anyways. We just kept everything, sort of like a grandma's basement. And so now we just need to make sure that we safely and legally dispose of all of those documents, which we can do slowly and surely. The expense to scan and digitalize those records is just following along with other, with what other counties our size is doing, or what they're doing around the state. Any questions?
Okay. I'm sure we have plenty of questions. Thank you all again for being here. Thanks to the whole team. I just have one general question, then a couple more specific. The first one is, could you help us understand what the trends are that you are seeing by way of the youth that are coming to you and that you are serving?
So the trends are in line with what I referred to when we talked about the dual status docket. So the trends are that kids and families are more stressed and strapped than they've been for a while. And so we have more kids and families who are coming through the custody, emergency order custody side. So private people looking and filing for custody of maybe their grandchildren or their nieces or nephews to help out families. And then we also have an increase in our dependency docket touches of kids and families. So not necessarily the number of kids that are changing custody, but the number of filings is, is increased. Coming to the court for help is increased. By way of delinquency, the trend is, I don't want to create any bad luck here, but I would just say the trend is not increasing. There aren't, there isn't an explosion that people are referring to, maybe in the media or otherwise, that the numbers don't bear that out. And I'd be happy to provide that data to show that what's actually happening is that there are less delinquency filings. And we have more serious filings than we used to, but not more than last year and not more than the year before. But we are still, as an aggregate, over the last couple of years, too high. One is too many, but, but certainly as you look historically, we are still too high in the shootings and murders and the filings there. It's not increasing year over year, but it is an increase to, we'll say, five years ago. We're still increased from there. The trend is also to have, in the court, the trend is guns. Guns are everywhere. And what I would just ask is if you or anyone you know, keep your gun in your car. Please don't do that. Because kids are very savvy and they break into cars and they take guns. Car, we're thankful to our partners at Kia and Hyundai, who did their updates to their vehicles. They're not sitting ducks anymore. They aren't easy to steal. So that trend of where we had just cars every single day is, is going down because of the owner's abilities to keep that safe from the manufacturer. Kids still steal cars, still break into cars, but that isn't any higher now than it used to be.
Okay. So more guns?
More guns. More guns.
Or serious offenses?
More guns, no matter what. Anytime a kid has a gun, I think of it as a serious offense, even just having it in their pocket. And so more guns, more shootings than before, not more than last year, significantly less than last year. They are more concentrated in geography, but not more than last year. And certainly not more than the year before. We are definitely falling.
That's interesting. A couple of things related to that then. When you talked about the partnerships, and I applaud you for the partnerships and trying to involve family members to ensure success for these kids, when, not only when they're in the facility, but then when they leave the facility. Is the Office of Family Voice part of that partnership? They're, they're with JFS. They are meant to help individuals that have kids in custody, figure out how to navigate the system to eventually regain custody of their kids?
We've had, in, in my courtroom, I've had one case recently where the office, I, is it director? I'm, I'm, the person in charge of that office came, as well as an associate, to speak with the family and talk with the family. Outside of court, I'm not sure because we certainly wouldn't ask that everybody involved with the case come to court every time. We are hopeful that our partnership with JFS can bring us an improved line of communication about who all's working with the team and working with the, the kid and family. Because of course, we would want to suggest, hey, the Office of Family Voice might want to get involved here. It's not really our place to do right now. So building that partnership is really what we're hopeful to do so that we can ask those questions without any sort of insinuation. But they, they have appeared, at least on one in my room.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they're in the loop when it comes to the work that you're doing. And then the, the other thing you mentioned, the CCF funding from the state. Was that a one-time or is that an annual amount or what are we talking about?
That was a one-time amount, right, from them to, to open.
Would have been startup costs.
Startup cost. With our, yes. So the CCF money was an application for startup costs for the facility itself. Running the facility then would come under a, under the same way that we ran Hillcrest before essentially, which would be JFS, the JFS levy. And similarly to not being able to sort of budget that before, we didn't dive into those numbers at all because we weren't granted the opportunity. I will tell you that we asked for from DYS, all of the money, a true ask from them. Not to say it wasn't a competitive bid, it was just very honest of, here's how much this costs. Because we want to make sure that anything we bring to our community is sustainable.
Yeah, I just didn't know if, I, I've read the same thing, that the governor wanted to stand these up in these different communities, particularly the urbans. And I was under the impression that more than one of the counties would get those dollars. And so I'm just wondering like what the timing is on that.
So there will be another application process. I think my understanding from the folks at DYS is that there will be future rounds of application requests and one granted out of each of those rounds. And so I know DYS was finishing their budgeting process as well and then sought to issue another RFP.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Somerud.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Yeah, I was under the impression as it relates to allocation of the grants that there will be six of them in particular areas in Ohio. So hopefully we'll qualify for the next one. Well, just in general, I just would like to say whoever's responsible for sending me the newsletters, I just put my seatbelt on and, okay, and so creative, the programming, innovative, all the programs that are going on, it's just awesome. So I have no doubt that you guys are doing great work and we want to be able to supplement and also undergird you as you do all that great work. So I look forward to the newsletters. Just in general, under Assessment Center and diversion, your 83.5% of the kids who did not receive a new charge one year out of the program is phenomenal. So that's a great thing. I also wanted to talk about, I had a question.
Sure.
About the van, under capital. So I wanted to make sure, is that two vans or three vans? You said normally you ask $50,000 for two. You request an additional 25. Is that to have a third van?
It does have two vans. We usually ask for just two, five passengers. We're asking for two vehicles, but one five passenger, one transport van. The transport van is the increased cost.
Okay. Very good. I know you have lots of vans. I see them around. So are we like, are we trading those in to upgrade?
So there are safety requirements that we have to follow. You can only, we, which we do follow, but we also want to make sure that as mileage increases and as the interior of the van gets wear and tear and the transport vehicles, that we are putting those out to pasture of sorts. We, we don't keep them. So we aren't just building a, a fleet. We, yeah, we, we, you know, our, our garage situation is. So we are building a fleet. We do send those. Do we sell them to someone in particular or just trade them back in? Through the county.
Great. And the help center is just fabulous. The addition of that, really excited about it. So just keep, just go forth and continue to do what you do.
Thank you.
I want to make sure you have the tools necessary to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. And I just echo the innovation that is coming out, Judge, out of the court there and your staff. We do have to change with the times because once we, I think we saw one thing, something new on the street. And you had mentioned the, I know you mentioned guns, but also drugs. And so I'm, I'm sure you're working with our team as it relates to the drug component as well. I think that's important. I've just seen a couple of things where people think, you know, well marijuana obviously is legal, but is now getting laced. And I know some, I've heard of some youth, I don't know them, but it turned them into the wrong direction. So I don't know, are you seeing some of that happening more?
So what I will say is, as you mentioned, marijuana is legalized. I sort of say legalized-ish because it's in some areas and not, not others. But it isn't legal anywhere for kids.
Right.
And it isn't legal for kids to buy it from each other or sell it to each other anywhere. And so that's the, that's the piece that's really hard right now for the court. And I think honestly for parents too, is to tell their kids to, to make sort of that distinction about, well, it's legal, but it's not, is a very, very hard thing. And I would think that the court and, and I would venture to guess parents too, could you support in how to message that and how to talk to kids about it? Because we do see cases where kids are continuing to smoke and they are buying it from the same people they used to buy it from and it isn't safe. And it's, it is putting themselves as well as their families in danger. And so the messaging about, just like you can't buy cigarettes, you can't buy weed, is not popular, but really, really important right now. Like you mentioned, some students at schools have been very ill. Some people who have bought some laced types of things. We don't know how to check any of that right now. And so the only thing that we've come up with at the court is just to say, we're, we're still not smoking. You know, you, it's just not something that we're doing and we can't do it. We have to follow the laws and we want to be safe. Most people that get their medical marijuana card or otherwise and can buy it from a dispensary then are sort of leaving those who are dealing on the street without as many customers, is my guess. And capitalism probably takes its effect. And I, and kids are the, the people left buying from the street. And so that's the panicky part is what's in the drugs and how do we get kids to stop? It's not any more or less important than messaging about buying guns on the street too. And that's all done through Facebook, which I should have got into the whole social media thing that we have going on. But Facebook and other social media places are where kids are finding places to buy drugs or guns.
Can you also talk about the mental health component? We're seeing more and more of our youth. I know we, we put money in toward, uh, I know we put money in toward trying to help with teen suicide, but it's a lot going on. What are you seeing in the juvenile court on that issue?
It's a lot going on, and it's a lot going on because families as a whole, either your nucleus or bigger, are struggling and have been. I think the line in the sand is around the pandemic, I don't want to blame the pandemic, but around that time, families really had to start doing the same amount or more with less. And resources got strapped. And they're not all the way back yet, and certainly we just saw that they're not all the way back yet, even from our most recent shutdown. So the way that leads to mental health in children is that they feel, you know, their emotions and they have their development that is mostly normal. And the parent who is there to help them or shepherd them or guide them or acknowledge and get them to an appointment or think, oh, I need to see a doctor, is also having an experience themselves, is also having increased anxiety, having increased rates of depression and losing their job or thinking about losing their job even. We know the statistics around that worry is enough to put a parent into a really tenuous state. That passes down then to their kid. Not only is that mental health genetic in some ways, but also the tense worry and stress is a quantifiable factor that people are able to study among kids. The worry about where am I going to sleep, what am I going to eat, is my little brother okay? Should I carry a gun to school? Am I going to get robbed today? That constant worry prevents part of their brain from growing. And so they're stuck in this, like you said, mental health, increased mental health diagnosis among kids. Of course, that's a really oversimplification, but in my non-clinical brain, that's how I sort of think of it. And so, mental health needs are increasing, not only because the symptoms are increasing, but also because clinicians are getting better at acknowledging symptoms and diagnosing people. What might have otherwise been, oh, that's just, you know, oh, Carrie, she's just sad, is now, oh, we can talk about why and how and what's going on. The same with neurodivergent kids, and the same with, you know, kids who have other delays. We have a really great resource in Children's Hospital. I take my kid there and have had some of the best success and some of the most heartbreak, but we're able to do that. And so part of it to me is increased in need and part of it is increased in awareness and ability to diagnose.
Gotcha. Now you indicated that the incidents involving juvenile, the numbers are not higher, but that the crimes themselves with guns is more egregious. Can you just tell people how the juvenile court is balancing that and handling that? Because we hear a lot that the age group is younger, they've got the guns, we're looking at some murders and different things because of their ages. I just wanted you to have the floor to talk about what juvenile court is doing to keep the county safe, keep the families safe, et cetera.
Thank you for that. I, juvenile court is private, it's not secret, but it's private. So we can't go on YouTube or we can't put our clerk's website out for everybody to see. And so that does lead to a lot of guessing and probably speculation. What we do when we have kids who are not safe to return to the community is keep them in our detention center and after their case, put them somewhere else. So they can go to residential treatment facilities or DYS. Those are opportunities that we have and use. Keeping kids in the detention center is something that the law tells us that should be a last resort. Of course, it gets to be the last resort in cases like you referred to Commissioner, when there is a murder or another very serious crime. That is something that weighs heavily on community safety. The other part of community safety is to make sure that when the kid is with us while their case is going on, we're not making it worse. We're not exacerbating their behaviors, their mental health, or otherwise. And so what that looks like is sometimes a kid is returned to the community on monitoring, electronic monitoring, which is a whole nother thing and is, is fine, can get overused really easily, and then it sort of becomes not that big of a deal to kids. So we try to use it sparingly so that it is really meaningful and kids follow the rules. But we need to make sure that the kids that we hold are not going to become worse while they're with us. So if we release a kid who has been charged with what could seem like or is a serious offense, they are released with the guidance from me and from the rest of the staff at the court as to rules they have to follow, checkups they have to check in with us for. Like you saw, the Assessment Center is a pre-trial services division where they keep contact with that person all the time. They are always ordered to go to their school every single day so that they can get back into the swing of being a kid. And we do all of those orders with the intention that when a kid is treated like a kid, they'll act like a kid. When they're treated like a grown-up, they'll act like a grown-up. When they're treated like a criminal, they'll act like a criminal. And we know that from decades and decades of research and experience. And so just like when we had, I'm trying to think of an incident, just like when we had the designation of super predators and we said, kids are so bad, little kids are so bad that pick up a gun, and we told them they were so bad. Well, then they acted so bad. And then we had a prison explosion. Then we sort of rethought that. And so my court, the court, juvenile court's emphasis is on meeting each kid where they are and balancing the outside needs. The outside needs, of course, being public safety. What we cannot do is predict the future. And if we could predict the future, we would bet a thousand, we would never be wrong. And so our commitment is that any kid that is held or released has a thoughtful decision and has, ultimately has a review with either myself or Judge DeGraff and Reid. So the cases that are split between the two of us, we are able to hold a review on, should that kid have been kept in or let out? Each of us are able to do that, and we do.
Thank you. My last question is the probation transformation. And I like the concept, but wanting to make sure the environment that we're in now, we, I like the fact that they would be somewhat of a life coach, I like that part. But we are in a, referees are looking for legislation now to be protected at games. Coaches, we see youth fighting the coaches, not all of them, but some. So can you kind of talk about how that will, because like you said, every person needs something different. Some people might need.
That's right.
You know, the structure with the vest, the gun and the, you know. And then some people, like you said, may need the life coach, the mentor. Can you talk about how this probation transformation, what you see is, how that balance would be?
Absolutely. The idea behind probation transformation and how our staff is trained through it is to be able to identify the differences in those kids. Instead of seeing, instead of being a hammer and seeing only nails, we are looking at each kid and deciding what's the level of care they need, what's the level of supervision, what involvement with their family should we do when we find out, or if we find out, oh, they don't have a family, or oh, their family is really strapped right now, what should we be doing in that vein? If we find out, which we unfortunately do sometimes, like that this kid is, is determined to commit these offenses. And like you had alluded to, Commissioner, needs the more structured force of a probation officer or even detention, then that is what we will do. But the transformation is sort of a, it's not our term, we didn't get to pick it, I wouldn't have picked that word, but it is really a training in identifying the differences in kids and being trained in providing the level of care that each of those differences need. It sounds, I can hear myself being a little wishy-washy about it. It's this big, giant, abstract project that has just a rubric that is amazing and has taken our staff almost a whole year to get through the training because they do it piece by piece by piece with the emphasis of the importance on each one. And so I'd be happy to just even let you talk to a PO who's gone through it. Some of them were cynics at the beginning, and some of them are still cynics, but bought-in cynics. And so that's the important part, is that they can see that it matters. The other piece of that is that we're getting results. And we aren't going to continue programs that don't give us any results. That just is a waste of time and energy and resources and attention from kids. And so we are getting results, and I think that, you know, being able to sort of quantify that into a summary is something we look forward to providing each of you, especially with the changes in the detention center and especially in the changes among our staff who have been trained in these new opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
How many kids do you see every year, go through the court?
How many kids go through the court in the detention or on the delinquency side? 10, I think we have 10,000 filings.
Six thousand was last year.
6,000.
It was.
Okay. I just wanted to get a kind of a feel for the volume that you're talking about.
So the, we will look that up and send it to each of you. 6,000 would be unique filings, which would not be individual kids, if that makes sense. You might get three or four filings for one kid. And then you might come back, so you would not be the same, but we can definitely find out.
Okay.
And that brings up another important point, that we're working on our case, I guess, scheduling, making sure that our cases flow through at a good pace, that they're not languishing and that we aren't, that any delay in the case isn't at the court's doing because we're here to give the justice, not to affect it. And so we want to make sure that you all know that we're really taking that seriously too.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for everybody coming in, really appreciate it. We'll come back if we have any additional questions.
Okay, that sounds great. We'll make sure we send you the data.
Thank you.
Number of kids.
Thank you. All right, we have a second presentation, the Court of Appeals is here, is it Julie Karznessler? Thank you, please come forward, you're welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Clicked Carrie take.
There it is, okay.
I thought you took the.
I got it. I thought you took the clicker.
It's all good, it's all good.
I also have a presentation, I don't know if there's magic, oh, perfect. Good afternoon, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. I am here on behalf of Administrative and Presiding Judge Kinsley and the rest of the First District Court of Appeals to request your approval of our 2026 operating budget. I think I'm in a good position today, hopefully, because our budget request is actually unchanged from the 2025 budget request and is also the same as the administrators' recommended budget that was presented to you last week. So our amount is a simple.
I feel like we should stop right now, but go ahead.
I know, right, go ahead, exactly.
Go ahead.
But I did want to take a moment of your time this afternoon just to highlight the court's work and our plan for 2026. So thank you again truly for this opportunity to do that. So I wanted to begin about, a little bit about what our court does and why it is so vital to Hamilton County. The First District Court of Appeals is the last step for most cases in our county. It is the last review court for many of our cases. The appellate court's work ensures that every detail is reviewed for the many cases heard by our trial courts. These, we really have, see a wide range of cases. This can include reviewing criminal convictions and sentences, evictions, divorces, business disputes, and even reviewing cases like Judge Bloom just talked about, where kids are removed permanently from their parents' care. The court works in panels of three judges, and each judge is supported by two staff attorneys. So what that means is there are at least nine eyes that are taking a deep look at every single case that comes before our court. And we generally see about 700 to 750 filings each year. So this vigorous process just guarantees that every party receives their day in court here in Hamilton County. So, but our court, our work does not end with the very important cases that are before us. But our court has really taken an opportunity over the last few years to extend our work to the legal community and the community at large. For instance, we offer a free-of-charge mediation program. It's still kind of in its infancy, but last year we saw a 60% success rate in that program. Additionally, our judges and our court staff are leaders in our communities and in the legal community at large and throughout the state. For example, we have first district judges that serve our very important committees, such as the Commission for Professionalism and the Ohio Jury Instructions Committee. The court also, we regularly host community groups. We really want to take an opportunity to pull the curtain back so people understand what is the appellate court, what do they do, how does that court work in conjunction with our trial court partners and to serve justice in our state. We also provide very sought-after internship programs, not only for law students, but undergraduate students. And we've also hosted some high school students over the last two years. So we, again, it's just very important to our court that we expand our services and our engagement with our community. So now that I, so for just over $100,000, we deliver high-quality justice and these community services. Just for context, I know our court, this, the Commissioners you support are operating expenses only, but our budget is just less than 1% of the total judiciary budget of this county. So I just wanted to put that in perspective. If you compare our operating budget to our sister districts throughout the state, we are also lower than our neighboring districts of the 2nd and the 12th, which those include counties such as Montgomery County, Warren County, and Butler County. And we are also at a lower operating budget than our single district counterparts in Franklin County and Cuyahoga County. I thought that was important to just kind of put us in perspective. To further do that, really, the operating costs that you guys provide for us, we, it's about, we spend approximately $153 per case that we receive. So now to move on a little bit from our work, just to talk a little bit about our past operating expenses. Our 2026 budget request, it continues the court's trend for a minimal or cost-neutral budget request. You can see that in the graph, we're kind of trying to run, and in, just neutral. For 2026, again, we are not asking for an increase, but rather continued support of some of this great programming that we've implemented over the last several years. These are our goals and priorities. It's, again, enhance the efficiency of our operations, continued that support of professional development and those education opportunities that I talked a little bit about. But before we get into that, we did take a hard look at 2026 working with our friends in the budget office. And we looked for places where we could reduce our budget, and we did find a couple places, and we were able to reduce line items specifically related to certain maintenance contracts and memberships that we did not see we're going to need in 2026. However, what we are asking for is continued support of the court's technological advancements. That includes funding for our court's courtroom recording equipment, our remote conferencing vendor, our website, and our other software subscriptions. Those things really help ensure that we provide great services to our court users and the legal community. Again, as I've kind of highlighted today, it is really important to our court to have just different opportunities for education, not only for students, but for practitioners here in the, in Hamilton County and other agencies. We have worked really hard over the last several years to expand our training opportunities and to engage with our other agency or other county counterparts. Just about two weeks ago, we had a in-house training where it was ourselves and the prosecutors and the public defender's office. So we're looking to continue that engagement and continue look for opportunities where the courts can work together. Also, we had a couple, about a month ago, maybe two months ago, we collaborated with Juvenile Court to provide enhanced training to those attorneys that work on their appointed list. So we're looking to continue those efforts. It's been a really great experience to work with our other county agencies. So we're looking to extend our internships and our, we do an annual appellate seminar. Again, we just want to make sure that the people that are representing those folks that cannot afford an attorney in criminal cases, that they are, they have quality, they provide quality work for those individuals. So we do provide some training at no cost to them every year. So we're looking to continue that and perhaps expand that to an all-day event. So, so, you know, as you can see, the court is very proud to deliver exceptional value and high quality justice and this meaningful community engagement. We strive to look for areas to expand our services for court users and the legal community, while this year's budget request was even at no increase. I can't promise I'll always be in that position, but we do really appreciate your support and our efforts and we look forward to continued collaboration in the future. So we believe this is a reasonable request and we ask that you approve our budget. Are there any questions?
Well, thank you. Thank you for working in partnership. I know we put quite a bit of pressure on everyone to hold tight in this budget cycle because it's, it is such a restrained budget because of the revenue being very flat. So thank you, we appreciate your working in partnership with the county and with the budget staff on that. I feel like this is a really crazy question.
Okay.
At the risk of being a little out on the ledge here, when I look at your budget, and I'm looking at the pie chart.
Sure.
And it's got the amounts there and the different things that are being, where the money's being spent, I don't see salaries on here.
Yes, so the Supreme Court of Ohio, they fund all of the salaries. So what you see in front of you is just operating expenses only.
I feel like I should have known that, but anyway, thank you for clarifying. So no salaries for the judges, our staff?
Staff, same, same thing. Staff and judges are supported by the state of Ohio.
Well, you hardly ever hear that, do you?
Yeah.
All right, no, I have no questions. Thank you for delivering a flat budget, we appreciate it. Commissioner Summer Adumas.
That was a great question, I was also gonna.
I'm sorry, I will, I will start with that from now.
No, that's okay. Well, thank you for all your hard work, thank you for the presentation and all the work of the judges. Just really impressed about the mediation component of it and that you're able to offer that free. And do you anticipate maybe in the future having to charge for that or anything?
No, we do not. Actually, we've expanded, we have a great mediator, she was someone that has been a staff, on staff for several years. She has actually worked in collaboration with the other appellate mediators so that if for some reason she has a conflict, they can share mediation, mediator so that it's still at a no cost to our residents. So they really have worked together and collaborated in ways to ensure that it is at no cost to those court users and those parties and attorneys that would like to use the court's services.
Right. Mediation is such an important component, and then to have a 60% success rate is really something to be proud of, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reese.
Yeah, I'll just add, thank you, it's some really tough times, and so we appreciate you working with the budget staff, not just on keeping it flat and, but making sure that services are not compromised and the quality of services. And I appreciate your comments and making sure that everyone, when they enter that courtroom, has proper representation as they are supposed to have. I also like the fact that you're thinking about the future. Internships are very, very important, we've got to get people, it's good to go to school and get trained on the books, but to come in and get that experience. So I just want to thank you for making sure that internships were not compromised as we are needing to get people in and trained and hopefully want to have a career here in Hamilton County. So it took a lot, I know, to put all those pieces together and provide us with something that fits within our budget, but at the same time, not compromising the citizens of Hamilton County, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you for coming in, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our budget presentations. I do want to say that we've got many more coming in upcoming meetings, so we will look forward.
I think we should stop right there, this is great. Hit the gavel.
I suspect that the salaries weren't included makes a difference. When you're trying to balance a budget, you don't have to worry about salaries.
Yes.
Thanks again. All right, so, do we have any public comments? No, not online or anything. Okay, very good, we'll move into comments and motions of Commissioners. Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Thank you, Madam President, just a few comments. Of course, we had Election Day and all of that and ran around during that time to see some of the people that were running for office, and we talked about that before about those who ran, and I just once again want to wish my congratulations to all of those who won and those who did not, and hopefully they won't give up because we need you in the process. Also, I participated in the Wawa celebration in Springdale, it was a big deal, and lots of people came out. I noticed the first one that I went to, I believe it was in Colrain, that they were just doing the, not the ribbon cutting, but they were doing the groundbreaking, lots and lots of samples and all over the place. And at Springdale, there was free coffee. So that just shows you how things have changed with them, and also people were, the gas and stuff, all with the gas rewards, so check that out, it's a beautiful facility. And of course, we have our budget coming up that we'll be deliberating, and I've been going through it with a fine, as they say, a fine tooth comb, every element of it, and I'm sure I'll have lots of comments as it relates to that. And I also want to thank the board once again, that when we found out about the SNAP benefits would be stopped, that we immediately, almost less than 24 hours, gave the extra $222,000 to, to the food bank, and they've subsequently received more monies and they're distributing all over the county. So we can't wait to see what the government is going to do, we knew what we needed to do. And whether or not they have a full funding or not, we're continuing to exercise our ability to distribute food all over the county so our people can eat. It's still an issue, and as I read just recently, maybe the people who receive SNAP may get 65% of it or whatever, but I really applaud our board for not waiting to see what's going to come down, but to immediately step on the gas and make sure that people are receiving the food that they need. And that'll end my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. I'd like to say that yesterday, Veterans Day, was decided to participate with the Veterans Services Commission. They hosted an event honoring those who had served in the Cold War, recognizing them in a ceremony with the Berlin Wall displayed as down at the Freedom Center. And myself and Commissioner Dreehouse, we were able to ceremonially prepare the wreath and lay it in their memories, and many of those who had served were there. And so just want to thank the VSC and all of the Commissioners on the VSC and the staff, because it was cold and windy out there, not as, not as beautiful as today, but wanted to make sure that we acknowledge them, and then just acknowledging all the veterans in Hamilton County that are here. We have almost 40,000. And one of the things I want to thank our board, when we were having those challenges at that time, not helping enough veterans, not funding enough, not a good partnership with VSC, all of that's turned around in a matter of a year and a half. And we have passed the largest budget, even with this budget, it's larger than ever in 285 years of Hamilton County's existence. And I think that's very important. We also, one of those things I want to thank my colleagues for supporting the Veterans Appreciation Day. Now, we don't do that on Veterans Day, because we know Veterans has a day, but every day we should be honoring veterans, and we have now a county event that helps veterans, and now we partner with the VSC, and we've done it for two years. And the first year was at Great American Ballpark, this year was at Sawyer Point, but it was amazing to see the thousands of veterans come out, and then to run into veterans who came to the first one. I ran into a veteran that had come to the first one, and when he came to the first one, he didn't have housing, he was contemplating suicide, he said, he didn't have food, he had come back and was so disappointed that he had served his country and he was a hero, but he felt when he came back home, he was treated as a zero. He came to Sawyer Point and said he wanted to come back to say thank you, because at the Great American Ballpark, he connected with the VSC, connected with all the help there, and he came back to say, hey, I got a job, I, I, I'm still alive, I feel alive, and he also was able to connect with other veterans to kind of have the camaraderie. And so he was just coming back to say thank you. So I'm excited about the work of the VSC and now the partnership that we have. We had no vans, now we got vans. We had not that many VSC people that can help you, now we got people out helping people. We had no marketing, no advertising, now we're marketing and advertising. When I see Butler County come on TV, I don't, I have no fear, that's great, but I know Hamilton County is coming up, and we are also helping our veterans. So yesterday was a big day, and I want to thank everyone that, that did come out, but also want to thank Teresa Burns who came out, and she has been an advisor to me on all veterans issues. You know, my grandfather served in the Navy, but he's no longer with me. My sister-in-law's in the Air Force, and she's down in Florida, she was in the Air Force, but she is advised and had no idea, I knew she was in the Army, but I didn't know she served in the Cold War. And so she was there, it was elated that we recognized yesterday that, so that was great. The other thing that I wanted to say was that we, in addition to giving funding to the Free Store Food Bank, which we support, we launched into action our 513 Relief Bus into an emergency mobile pantry. And we're, Mobile Pantry Operations in partnerships with local pantries, and we're able to give funding credits so they go to the Free Store Food Bank in addition to the 200,000, doesn't touch that. They get to go in there and additionally get $2,000 more worth of food to add to the food they were already doing because they're getting so many pressure points. And many of these pantries locations are where our bus has been going and helping people, we've helped almost 30,000 people. With that being said, we kicked off on Monday with the snow. Usually when they say it's a snow day, right, it's a slow day. It was not a slow day. People were lined up all the way down Wayne Avenue in Lincoln Heights, we were at Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church, which is actually in Woodlot, and they have a mobile pantry, and Pastor Julian Cook, so they were trying to do something, was doing something, and they partnered with us. And so on that day, we were able to feed an additional 150 people and, with the food, and then they were able to do gift cards that they did for 500 families, and then they did gift cards for 300, $300 gift cards for people's gas and electric bill who were federal workers who were laid off. And they had an operation that was really, really put together. I want to thank all of the members and church members that volunteered, they had the laptops out, they were doing it. And then I want to thank our, Arlene and Scott from our team with the bus out there, and we, and I want to thank Veda Stevens from my office as well. We were out there in the snow, and the cars were lined up. We started 10 o'clock, I pulled up at 9:10, and they were all down the street, around the corner, even into a whole nother municipality, because people really needed help. I ran into a lady that said, I, I heard that, I know that voice, and she said, Commissioner Reese? I said, yes, she said, please come to me, I'm blind. And I just want to tell you, thank y'all and the commission, because I needed help. So this is rough out here. And so anyway, that worked out, we're in Cleves, probably right now still, in Cleves with the church in Cleves that partnered with us when we first rolled our bus out, and helped a lot of families in the trailers. I remember we pulled up, they said, Commissioner Reese, come out here, they don't trust the government. They said, are you coming to take our trailer? I said, no, we're coming to help. And so now that's been one of our good stops out in Cleves, and then we'll be in Roseline this afternoon. So these are the areas, just want to tell people, and get on 513relief.org, but we're in Cleves today from 10:00 to 1:00, and it's probably over now. We're on our way to Roseline, and at 8:50, Reading Road Agape Ministries, that's 4:00 to 7:00. We're in North College Hill on Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We're in Mount Halsey on Friday, November 14th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., 1585 Compton Road. We're in Forest Park at the Word of Deliverance on Monday, November 17th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We're in Wynton Hills with Food From the Soul that's been feeding people with our bus for the last year and a half, and so we're going to be supporting their stop, and that's on Winesty. We're in Avondale, New Hope, November 19th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then on that same Wednesday, we're 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. for people getting off work at 8:50, Reading Road Agape Ministry. Then we're in Evingston, and I remember Evingston Food Pantry, when they got started, they wanted some help from us, and they were happy to know that we can partner with them, and they're at 1627 Fairfax Avenue, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then we're at Walnut Hills Bethel Baptist, Friday the 21st, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Alms Place, and that is, we're going to some food desert areas as well. So people could go to 513relief.org and find out where we're at, and each stop we'll be able to help at least 150 families, and that's, all things are helpful. With that being said, I had reached out to Kroger's and Keith at Kroger's, Keith Daley, and I said, when this first started, I said, hey, because I've been calling everybody, what can you do? We need some help. And he said, hey, you know, as you can imagine, you know, we're located all over the country, and we're trying, and we don't know, and I got a call from him, and he said, thank you for the 513 Relief Bus and the awarenesses out there, and he got it approved, and he told me that there'd be 23,000 families that they're going to be able to help going into our Free Store Food Bank, pulling in, I think, today or tomorrow. So I want to give them a big shout out and thank you for what they're doing, and that's for the Hamilton County. The other thing I want to do is thank, I want to thank the Sigma, the Delta Theta Sigma Chapter of the Sigma paternity. I was able to, I was one of the people honored this weekend at the Freedom Center at the Bigger and Better Business Awards, and I want to thank them for their award and their acknowledgement, and congratulations to them and all the honorees. Scholarships were given out to students to go to college, and I was happy to be a part of that as well, and I want to thank their state president, Mr. Michael Owens, for, for his support as well. With that, I wanted to say that Juvenile Court was here, and they talked about their budget, but one of the things we talked about, capital, and when Mr. Ludo does his, does his part, maybe he can give us an update. I know we want to make sure that the employees have a good working conditions over there. There were some issues about the elevator, want to get an update on that, working elevators. And then the second thing, an update on, I said, power washed the building, but they said that would, I don't know if it would fall down or something from the power washing or something, they, I just figured, just get a power washer, let's scrub this thing. But he would like to get an update, I know there's some other ways that. I know there's some other ways that they're going to be working on. And I would like to get an update on there. The other thing I like to know is you're hearing a lot in Washington. The president's, he said, they said, the judges said the president has to do this. And then the president come back and say, well, I don't have to do it. And it's just a lot going on on social media to keep up with. And people want to know, will I have food or I won't have food? And so when they said a partial, a partial funding, I like to get the numbers. I think we need to get the numbers out. How many people in Hamilton County will get helped? How many people in Hamilton County will be left behind? How many babies will have formula? How many babies will be left behind? How many senior citizens will be helped? How many will be left behind? How many veterans will be helped? How many will be left behind? Because they're talking about a partial. Who fits in the partial? Or how much fits in it? When do we get it? And then how are the people selected or notified? Or what's the percentage? How do they do the percentages? I have no idea. It's very complicated. But people want to know, can I go and get some groceries? Or will I not be able to get groceries? Or don't let me get to the counter and now I got to take all this stuff and put it back in the cart because I only have enough for a week's worth, for a two weeks' worth. So I think we need to get those numbers. The other thing, there's been back and forth about not keeping people in the system. And I don't know if it's true, but it's back and forth about, and if they come out of the system, I think it was told to us by the director of Giles and Family Services, it's not a 24-hour cash app program. I mean, if you're out of the system, there's some steps that have to be taken to recertify, to get back in the system. And if so, how long is that? And then lastly, are they going to do it around the holidays? So now our staffing has to beef up because we got to get them in the system. So those are questions that I've been hearing from the people. I can't answer them. I like to answer them because we can't hardly keep up with this thing. It's like a, it's paddleball, but not in a good way, Leslie. But it's one of those things that's going back and forth. And people don't understand, you know, kind of what it is. My last thing is on the budget. Still combing through it, still going through it. But I do want us to try to look at maybe some things that maybe we haven't done. We're always told something couldn't be done. It might not legally not be able to be done. You know, because then when it gets done, they say, oh, it wasn't illegal. It's just never done it before. We've got to do some never-done-it-before things that are legal. And so one of the things I want to look at is what can we do to get a piece of the liquor? We got things that we own that's selling liquor and we're not getting anything out of it. We have that Millennium site and they will be selling liquor. I'm not saying we got to do that site. But I want us to look creatively, not some, we got to go to the legislature because that'd take all day, just like they up in Washington, back and forth, back and forth. But it has to be something. And I want to comb it because I think that if we got a piece of it, maybe we have the liquor license or somebody leases it from us. Because they do those things. That we might be able to bring in some additional funds to our budget. It's unfortunate during these times liquor sales go way up. The Liquor Commission used to report to my committee at the State House. So I learned a lot more than I wanted to learn about it. And the only thing we do is like on here, we'll approve a liquor license. That's what we do. Approved. I'm trying to figure out, we can't do the syntax, I understand that. But if we had the license and someone leased the license from us and then we can bring in some revenue for the Hamilton County taxpayers and fund some additional things, I would be interested in that more than adding costs to homeowners. If they sell their property now in here, there is recommended. We ain't voted on it. We haven't really had no real discussion. But it's in here that we would increase your closing cost. We would add on to it. I'm not willing to move in that direction. I want to see what other things we might be able to creatively do. Now, this has never been done before. It's like, oh, we can't do it, we can't do it. But in Washington, they told me a whole lot of stuff we couldn't do. And next thing I know, they said, well, we just never did it before. Previous people just never tried it. It was never illegal, but we just never tried it. So these are times when we need to look at everything. So I want to thank Mr. Ludo. I talked to him about it and he's looking at everything. I said, comb everything and seeing how we might can be even more creative than we've been in the past. So those are the things that I have and that is it.
Thank you. I just have a few things. And Commissioner, I don't, I don't remember the timing of the LAD, Smart Home Groundbreaking. But we were both there. Thank you to LAD for partnering with us to make sure that we have smart homes available for people with disabilities in this community. Young adults who get to live independently in these homes because of the technology that is provided through these smart homes. And so some of our ARPA housing dollars that we all agreed to are going into these homes. And so the most recent one opened in Colrain. They were very excited about it. It's smack in the middle of the neighborhood. It's a great location. So very excited about that groundbreaking. I also attended the Shared Services Summit. Lots of jurisdictions were there, talking about how the county can partner with them, whether it's buying salt or maintaining fire hydrants or economic development, but also how they can partner with one another. And it really provides this great opportunity for networking amongst all the 49 jurisdictions in Hamilton County. So really, really pleased to attend that and see all of those that were in attendance from the different jurisdictions. I too was going to mention the bus. I do want to thank Lisa Trevina, Arlene, Erica for pivoting so quickly. You know, we asked them to focus on food. They did it. And then Commissioner Reese, as you mentioned, we're in many, many communities, including the Whitewater Crossing site today and then Missionary Baptist in Lincoln Heights a couple of days ago, or was it yesterday? And all the people that are still coming out because they have such uncertainty about access to food. So I did want to thank all of them for the quick pivot. And I too talked to Keith Daly about what Kroger might do related to the SNAP benefits being unavailable to people in this community. And he too told me that a trailer of food was headed to Free Store Food Bank. So I too want to thank Kroger for stepping up. They already have things in place in the stores related to this to make sure people are guided to low prices. But they delivered a truck full of food to the Free Store Food Banks. Very grateful for that, that partnership. Veterans Day yesterday, I had the opportunity to go down to the Freedom Center. As Commissioner Reese, you said, with the laying of the wreath, I thought it was a really significant and meaningful ceremony. And I also attended the Veterans Day event over at the main library where they were honoring many, many veterans that were in the audience. So thank you to the library for that partnership. And they do it every year. And I was glad to be able to attend on behalf of the commission. Lastly, I just wanted to highlight, we had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night that we have canceled. I just want people to know that. I know the notice went out. It was supposed to be in Delhi Township. They were looking forward to having us out to talk about what they're doing in Delhi. Hopefully we'll revisit that and do that another time. But evidently, that was a bad time for others. So we've canceled that meeting. And so that's why today is a consolidating meeting. Really, it's a staff and a legislative meeting rolled into one, which is why we had those presentations in front of us today. So that's all I have, other than the one by leave. And Jeff, I'm just going to do it right now.
I just wanted to thank you for bringing up LAD. And I do just want to personally thank both of you, as well as, like you said, CDF, because we put the money there. You know, one of the things, I really wanted to have these smart homes and I really thank you guys for your support. And it took some time, all of us, it took some time. And I do want to thank CDF for bringing it together with LAD because I knew it took a little more time than all of us had thought at the time. So thank you.
Well, thank you for the, thank you for the support. But we've all been very interested in having these smart homes built. And in fact, they were put at the table during the ARPA discussions when we insisted that LAD be at the table to help us build smart homes way back in the days of COVID. So appreciate that, but it's been on the mind of all three of us. So let's get to by leave number one. This is a resolution reappointing a member to the Rural Zoning Commission. This is Craig James. Without any comment or questions, I'm going to move that we approve of by leave number one.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Jeff Aludo.
Thank you, Commissioners. No by leave items, just a couple of quick comments. There was a question about the elevators at 800 Broadway. I'll get the board the specific timeline on it. The board did approve, though, last week, a capital appropriation for elevators at 800 Broadway, the Courthouse and the Taft Center. So 800 was included in that. And I know that that project is ready to go out to bid. But I'll get from Facilities the timeline on, the anticipated timeline on the renovation work there. I also, Commissioners, I had received several questions from offices about SNAP. And I had asked John Nelson to be prepared to say a little something about that today, given the fact that we have the reopening conversations going on today, which are going to change the dynamic as well. And I know Melissa Graves perhaps may be on, online. But I thought it would just be good to get directly from JFS, which is directly speaking with ODJFS, the latest in terms of the reduced benefit allocation for November, what we're anticipating for future months, et cetera. So John, would you mind just giving an update on that?
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioners, good morning, good afternoon. Just wanted to give you all an update that yesterday, ODJFS substantially updated their computer systems to allow for partial benefits because that was not even a feature built into the system. So they updated the computer system. So our understanding is that they're asking us to prepare for a 65% benefit payment. So we've got everything in the system ready to go. But we haven't gotten the green light from ODJFS yet. Melissa Graves is on the Zoom call. And Melissa can add some context. And she's preparing the managers and her team ready to roll out the moment we get a green light from ODJFS. I think the, I'll let kind of Melissa talk about it because there is some complications in terms of onboarding new people into benefits as we're doing this process because of the shutdown. Melissa can talk about that as well as she's talking through it. Please, thank you.
By green light, do you mean the funding being made available?
So I believe that the funding has been, is available. But I think the green light is more to deploy the payments. So, yeah.
Hey, John. So thank you, everyone. Yes, the system has been updated for a maximum allotment for 65% for all SNAP applicants for the month of November. What we are preparing for is for individuals that may not already, be already determined eligible for SNAP benefits. We have to manually calculate those individuals. But right now, the system is updated and we're just waiting for the state to allow us to know when they actually will begin to approve individuals to load their benefits on the card. We can see them in the system, but we haven't got approval when it will be initiated.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. It's very confusing.
Yeah, we're ready to roll. So the funds are ready, the amounts are loaded. So we're just waiting for a directive from the state in order to enable those payments so people can have the money available.
And that, you feel like that's imminent?
I have a feeling, yes. Yeah. And it's, you know, again, I think part of the hesitation might be also to see if the government will reopen. And maybe there is an opportunity to maybe do the 100%, if at all possible. So I think that might be some of the cause, but I'm speculating there, so.
We're not watching TV today at the moment, but who knows what's going on, the federal government. But that would be great news. Commissioners, any questions for John?
Well, I was just listening to Melissa.
Melissa Graves. She's our Assistant Director over Economic Sustainability.
Okay. And she had indicated about the 65%, the SNAP applicants are ready. But she meant, she meant to say the SNAP recipients are ready to receive. And then those that are new, that's what you guys are working on, trying to figure out how to get them into the system.
So Commissioner, on that one, all of them are ready to roll, those who are already eligible. So everyone that's eligible is ready to roll. So the 65% is the payment amount. So they won't get the 100% benefit, they get the 65%. And then new applicants, we're loading them into the system manually.
Right, but she didn't say it that way. But it's okay. She said 60, that the applicants, the SNAP applicants can get 65%. But really, it's the SNAP recipients can get the 65%. And then those new, and I understand, I understand what she's saying. But I just wanted, people that were listening, it's the ones who have already received SNAP benefits before. Okay.
Melissa, go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner, you are correct. It is SNAP recipients. I do apologize if I misspoke. You are correct.
Oh, that's okay. No problem. I know you guys are working hard to make it happen. Thank you so much. And I'm just thinking that other percentage that they're missing, you don't have a crystal ball. I know. But do you think, what, will that be added on for the next month, you're thinking, John? Or what? No, you don't?
No idea, Commissioner. Yeah, I think we'll have to wait for a direction from ODJFS on that.
Okay, how come you don't know?
Nobody knows.
Yeah, I know.
All right, Commissioner Reese, any questions?
Yes, I do. My question is, okay, so the 65%, and that leaves, can we get that in dollar amounts? I know it's $19 million, they were saying, a month. And what, do we know like how that will be effective in terms of, are any children affected? We had some good numbers at your presentation. And I was just, now that we got, and we don't have it, but now we're looking at 65%. And I'd like to know what the new numbers and who might be affected. I know you guys were looking at that in terms of seniors and children's, seniors, children, et cetera. And then we're on the holding pattern, but we don't know the date. Is that what we're saying?
Correct, yes. So we've got, systems-wise, we've got everything in place. So we're just waiting for direction right now from ODJFS.
Okay. And then the other thing was, they were saying that they, we were kind of broke up into two segments, if I'm understanding correctly. The first of the month, there's a chunk of people affected, were past the first of the month. And then there was, I think, November 20th was the next group that would be affected.
Correct. So Commissioner, we do our payments in like a rolling portion. So every, every, every so often in the interval of the month, people get their benefits loaded. So, but a majority of them will receive it either on the first or the 20th. So that, that first date, you're correct, has passed, but the 20th date is coming up. So hopefully, we'll get everything resolved by that 20th date. So the next substantial group will get that loaded, the full amount, hopefully loaded onto their cards.
65% amount?
I'm hoping.
We're hoping if, you know, years.
I'm really hoping for 100%.
They do the right thing. Okay, so the first of the month crowd that is past, what happened with them? Are they still in the system? Do they have to reapply?
No, they're in the system. So they're fully eligible. So they're in the system, they're ready to roll. So the moment we get notification, we'll be able to push the dollars over into their cards.
So the back, back date?
Yes.
Those folks. Have we heard from those folks or anybody? I mean, I'm trying to keep them held on until, but if the first of the month is over and I don't have anything to eat, what?
Yeah, Commissioner Reese, that would be a question for Melissa Graves. She keeps a year for those kind of input. I don't know if Melissa has anything to add on that.
I think we've been really good with communication. So we haven't heard a lot in reference to individuals not knowing what was going on. We've tried to update anyone, everyone in reference to how the benefits were currently held. So we are hoping that we'll be able to communicate, like you said, Commissioner Reese, that these benefits will be available to individuals soon.
Gotcha.
So Commissioner, we do have the ability to text all of our recipients. So we send them text messages, updates, whenever it's available. So we do text all of our recipients, letting them know what's going on, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the update. Jeff, do you have anything further?
No further by leave comments.
All right, let's move to the consent agenda.
Okay. Consent agenda, Commissioners, starting with item one, is a budget adjustment. This is mostly grant-related transfers within the sheriff and the clerk of courts office. Item number two is the, is the purchase order for advertising for the 513 Item number two is the, is the purchase order for advertising for the 513 relief program with Radio One, $107,000, $107,134. Item number three is mechanical, electrical plumbing design services for county facilities with Davies Engineering. Items, then we start into some JFS items. Item number four is the report of bid awards and contracts authorized by the director for August at $97,256. Item five is the bid awards and contracts authorized for September at $45,000. Item number six is a resolution authorizing a renewal of the original agreement between Hamilton County and the United Methodist Children's Home Family Services for Independent Living Services, $1.1 million. Item number seven is a renewal of the original agreement with Step Higher Inc., Nella's Place for Independent Living Services, $500,000. Item number eight is a, is an amendment to an agreement for travel arrangement and arrangements and related services for JFS staff and consumers, $10,000. And item number nine is a renewal with Changing Lives Youth Services for Independent Living Services, $500,000. The total of those JFS contracts are 2.2 million. Then we have the sheriff reporting no objection to one liquor permit application at 7011 New Haven Road in New Baltimore, Ohio in Crosby Township. That is your consent agenda, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Yes, item two, Jeff. Is that 107,000? Is that a standard cost that we pay? And in addition, what was the increase for the 35,000?
Commissioner, I can find that, I can get that answer for you. I don't know right off the top of my head what the increase was.
And it was for the purpose of?
This is for advertising our 513 relief program on Radio One.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
No comment.
I have a question for the clerk, actually. So as we look to approve of these items, is, I know I should know this, I'm having some wine lapses today. So the sheriff's item, should that be item number 10? Or does it generally not get a number? I feel like it should have a number.
It should have a number.
It should have a number. All right. Okay, so in that case, I'm going to name that item 10. And Commissioners, I'm going to make a motion to approve of consent agenda items one through 10.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, with nothing further, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer Dumas? Yes. Commissioner Reese? Yes, thank you.